Called all of the meeting, the Mayor and Board of Alderman, February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. If you're with your own Alderman, Parker in prayer and pledge.
Thank you Father for this day. We thank you for your mercy and your grace. We ask that you look over us tonight while we do city business for the best of all the people in Long Beach. We ask that you bless our first responders, all their families, and our military and all their families. For we ask all these things in Jesus's name and his sake. Amen.
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 Welcome everybody. Let's do our roll call. Patrick?
Here.
And Mr. Magui is out with illness. And Mr. Frazier?
Uh, here.
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 Angie and Bernie?
Present.
Present.
Present and person. Uh, we do have a quorum. No public hearings tonight. Do we have any public comments? It's not, yeah, a public comment, not a rated, uh, related to the agenda. Uh, I asked Hunter at a later time, and it'd be up to the pleasure of board if we want to include this. Uh, I don't know if we include this now, if we do an amendment to the docket. Uh, he is doing a, uh, uh, debate with the, uh, all the candidates for all the open seats here in Long Beach. And I'd asked him if he would share that, but I can't move forward without the-
I'll make a motion to add it as an amendment.
Second.
Does it go- Under new business?
Go ahead and do it under new business or allow it now?
Now's fine.
Yeah, now's fine, I guess.
All right, we got a motion, a second to go ahead and allow him to speak now with, uh, any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Hunter, thank you so much. I appreciate you being here to do this.
Mayor, Board of Alderman, Kenny, thank you guys very much too as well. I sent out all of the candidates, and I believe all of yourself too, the agendas and the invitations for, uh, for the debate also. And as I was speaking with Recreation Director Bob Paul and also the mayor too, that, uh, I just kind of wanted to see where we were going with the rules and where we're going with, obviously, I know you guys are all going to be there. But as far as where we go, now, of course, we spoke, uh, Mr. Paul and I talked about the signs. Um, there's, as you know, i- the rule in the city is that you're not supposed to have signs on city property. However, this is going to be open to, you know, it's up to you guys to decide whether this is, this is worth having, you know, for every single person if they have, it's fair all the way across the board. If you can have signs up during the event, take them down afterwards, it's up to y'all. I'm leaving that, uh, on your, the agenda for you guys. So, uh, but as far as everything else goes, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask right now because this is the last meeting before the debate, so.
Okay, well, here's-
Is that a moving precinct?
Does this open the door though for people to come in and say, y'all put it on public property here?
That's true.
That, for that day only, is that what you're saying? I, I mean-
I don't know that since we're, that it would be appropriate for us to make that decision when other people are-
I, I agree. I say we do not allow it. Yeah, I don't, I just say no.
You make it.
Yeah, I'm good with nobody putting signs and it's fair for everybody. Yeah.
And, and Hunter, the only opinion that I would have is, you know-
Yes, sir.
We do, we do have a lot of candidates.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, i- if you look at the time length on, on question and answers, not that I'm trying to cut you down, but-
Sure.
You know, i- it could get long-winded, uh, at doing each one. Well, you do have three that don't have opponents, but you, but they're going to get up and talk for a minute or two.
Of course, and I've given you all the, the ability to do that, so.
Yeah, all right.
As, as far as it goes, uh, you guys let me know. I'm going to send out the rules to the candidates. Uh, probably either tomorrow or before Friday at least, but I want to make sure that I know that I follow the rules that you guys expect.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think you've done it well in the past, and other than the no signs that I think the board agrees on, I think, let it roll as you've done.
Right. Agree.
All right.
Hey, I, I think you should use your best judgment. I don't think us, we have opponents. I don't think we should have any say in how you run your debate.
Yes, sir, absolutely. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
All right, anything else? All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, moving forward, uh, no announcements, presentation, or proclamations. Uh, is there any, any amendments to the municipal docket? Here none, moving forward to approve the minutes of Mayor and Board of Alderman for January fourth, twenty twenty fi- twenty twenty twenty-five, regular-
That should be February, I'm sorry.
Yeah, excuse me, February. Uh, I'm glad you caught that.
I'll make the motion that we approve, uh, pending the change showing February the fourth of twenty twenty-five, regular meeting and executive session.
Hmm, Angie, that's still your second? Okay, any further discussion? Here none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have Planning and Development Commission, January tw- uh, uh-
Same thing, should be February.
Should be February again. It should be February. It's on, it's January, so we've got a typo. Uh, February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, a motion, second, approval, discussion, and approval. Got a motion, second, discussion. Here none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have, uh, Appeal Planning Commission, uh, decision, uh, per Dale Stenit. Got a motion, second, for discussion. Discussion. Want to hear from Mr. Stenit?
Yes, sir.
Come on up. Speak into the mic for us, Dale.
How you doing?
Thank you.
Um, presented a sketch plat to the Planning Commission and, um, I believe through, uh, Overstreet and Associates projected, saying it wasn't the common areas. It's a small, kind of a project we're doing on Fifth Street. And, um, when, if I'd had time to discuss, I guess, with him and maybe make more clear what we're wanting to do, um, I may not have gone that way, may not have gotten denied, so I didn't know if they had, he had any questions, or I kind of explained what we're doing. But, you know, the common areas are typically anything that's not inside a unit. So, um, we're not doing much on the outside as far as comm- amenities, because in each unit, we're going to do courtyards, a pool, in every single unit that we build. So, we're trying to minimize any outside, um, common areas other than driveway, ingress, egress, utilities, things like that.
Questions?
So, uh, Mr. Stenit, just so you know, and I, you caught me a couple of weeks ago, we were talking about your project.
Um, as far as what you were talking about building and all, you know, to the gold standard and things like that.
Uh, that's a great idea, and, and I applaud that, you know, for not only insurance reasons, hurricanes, things like that. Um, the city and this board have, in the past, had stricter rules on developments with common areas being a green, green space.
Right.
So, that, that's the first thing. I personally had made the statement at the last meeting, opposing any more R-one in commercial space.
Right.
Due to the fact that, as a city, we can't go out and re-zone property. And I'll say what I, I, we tried that, uh, eight years ago, George and Bernie?
Yeah.
Uh, where we tried to do an overlay district?
Yes.
And there is, there is a lot of property out there that, doing research, pre-Katrina to now, some was commercial, and now it's residential. Um, so finding those has, has been difficult and has upset a lot of people. My point is, I, I, unfortunately, I can't vote for it due to the fact that it is in our downtown commercial space.
We've already been, we were approved by the Planning Commission to build in s- in the C-one area.
Understand.
But I was, what I was denied was the not enough common area.
Understand.
So, where, so are you, are you, are you, uh, denying us to even build condos in that, or what?
My vote, my personal vote as a board member up here, is against having the R-one person, uh, residential in the commercial space.
Okay.
So, and I'm just kind of giving you the background of where my vote's coming from.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Um, but I wanted to address also where the city was coming from.
Understand, yes, we just-
No, 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 as far as the green space for common area.
So, is there any guy, I have not found any guidelines what the city wants for the amount of green space, what they require. Those things are not available that I know of. So, we put a plan together. Our green space is going to be inside each unit, in a, in a courtyard. That's how we laid it out. I can make green space or common areas, and take up some room, make the unit smaller. There's things we can adjust, if that's what we need to do, to make, you know, to get with, with David, or who do I talk to about that?
Dale, what are you talking about in a, in each unit, green space? You got a yard-
Each unit's going to have, you're going to, we're going to walk, walk through into a courtyard. You have pool, uh, palm trees, landscaping, all inside each unit.
How, how big's the courtyard?
It's going to be, I've got a couple layouts. We're doing different size. Pool probably be eight by twelve, courtyard will be fifteen by twenty, something like that, outside, so.
Mike, is that, uh, is that good for a green space, or has it got to be a common for all tenants?
My definition for a green space has got to be a green space for everybody. That's just the way I read it.
Common area or green space?
The common area is a green space for the whole development.
Because I know we just went through this with the other development, a basin of ninety, and we required them to put a green space for everybody.
I mean, I could put a green space out there. We have, we have room. We could adjust it, but I'm still going to do the courtyards and what we planned. We can still squeeze in there, depending on how much green space the city wants for common area.
Uh, do we know how much, was it certain size for the certain number of units, or is there a dep-
I'm going to have to refer it and see if Jim can help us out, which is some of this discussion.
There's, that would be what the planning, the Planning Commission would just, would decide. There's some, some talk in the, in the zoning ordinance or some stuff about it, but the Planning Commission would approve it. Let me, let me, it, because there was some confusion on this, and I, let me clear that up if I could. First of all, our ordinance says the sketch plan will be reviewed by the Planning Commission and, and approved by you guys. So, it's, it's, it, he's properly couched it as an appeal, but it's not exactly an appeal. It's just the Planning Commission has recommended against it, but you guys can still just approve it as it is. The, the confusion arose, guys, because the wording on, on the engineer's letter is correct, but he, he was talking about the common area and, Mr. Stenit's exactly right. The, the driveway coming in is common, is common area that everybody's got to maintain. But that's not the area that, what the engineer's talking about. What the engineer's talking about is, on the sketch plan, you don't see anything at all. Now, if, whatever he would, and, and he's right, what he's planning, that, what he's planning on doing, his condos sounds really nice, but it's not common area. It's private condos. There's nothing on the sketch plan that shows any common area amenities. And, and when I read this, that's what the Planning Commission seemed to be looking for, is are you going to do anything? And if you are, would you put that on there so we could see it? I, I, I mean, you still can approve it as it is. It's up to you, but there was some confusion about the driveway being common. It is, you're right. But I don't think that's what they were asking. I always think that what they were asking was, are you doing anything at all in the common area?
And we were, it was, it's a tight, it's a small, we wanted, we could eliminate one, one unit and do a lot of common area and some, but I'll, we want to do something different. And, and if I need to speak with David or my, my engineer, we could do something, we could change it up a little bit and, um,
That, that's way above-
If it's needed.
So, I, I personally would like to table this and send it back to the development with a new plan and, and run it through there. And, and work with the, our city engineer and Mike on the common areas and everything.
Okay.
And resubmit it to the Planning and Development Commission.
Okay.
That's what I, that's, that's the motion I'm going to make.
I'll second that.
All right, we got a new motion, a second, to, to send this back to Planning Development in conjunction with Dale, the developer, and Mike, Building Inspector, and David Ball from Engineering. Any more discussion?
Just so we're clear, they, they're good to do a condo. They just did-
We just approved the minutes of the Planning Commission, and they had approved them to do condos in that area. And I follow where Donald's coming from, but I think we need probably to address this at the next board meeting, not with, with Dale. But if we want to stop this residential and commercial, we need to address that separately.
And I'd recommend on next agenda, let's put it on there for discussion, uh, you know, and, and look at, until we could develop a new guideline, ordinance, or whatever. And, uh, see what we could do with it, so. Any more discussion? All right, here none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, uh, roll call. Patrick?
Aye.
Donald?
Nay.
Mike?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Angie?
Aye.
And Bernie?
Nay.
All right, all right, we got one, two, three, four, to two.
Four, two, B.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, uh, next, we have approved docket of claims number O-two-one-eight-two-five, motion second for discussion and approval.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Here none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we go to unfinished business, request Jeep in the Coast. Uh, this is for our, they request their payment of eighty-five hundred dollars, and motion second for discussion and approval.
Move.
Second.
Discussion.
Discussion.
So, in, in, in time going by, I know they're asking for eighty-five hundred, but we're supplying more and more. I, I would offer a substitute motion, uh, allowing up to five thousand.
Okay, we got a, got a substitute motion with a second, uh, to allow up to five thousand dollars. Discussion.
Didn't we do the same thing for Cruisin' the Coast, eighty-five hundred?
No, we do.
Well, I, here's, here's my reasoning behind it, Bernie, is we have a lot of overtime with our police officers throughout the weekend. Um, our utility partners are, uh, working on overtime. We're supplying the, uh, stage, the generator, and I believe the fuel. So, it's just, what I'm, I'm not cutting them, I'm just saying we are putting in a lot more from the city that I'm going, I, instead of going in debt.
Well, we don't want to, uh, lose them.
No, I, I, I agree. I agree.
We have to look at, on the other hand, too, Cruisin' the Coast, we get one day of people in Long Beach. Jeep in the Coast, we get revenue for-
And, and that's why, that's why I just brought it up. I mean, i- if you guys don't feel the same, I, I'm, I'm one vote, you know, I mean, not to be disgruntled, I'm just throwing out other options.
If you look at our sales tax last year for Cruisin' the Coast and Jeep in the Coast, actually, if you'll go back two years or even three years, you'll see for the four days of Jeep in the Coast against, uh, seven or eight days of cruising, it's the sales tax revenue is about the same. So, and we're giving, uh, we're giving Cruisin' the Coast thirteen thousand five hundred dollars, if I'm not mistaken. We have about three thousand dollars in overtime. What do we give them?
Eighty-five hundred.
Or the parade?
Yes, it's the same.
Okay, so we got, we got three thousand dollars overtime for police department, which is a given. We have, uh, we pick up trash, just like we do in everything else. About the only thing we're not giving them is a stage and a generator. We have a street sweeper that comes in. We have to pay them to clean Jeff Davis after the parade, so there's just, but the sales tax that we, actually, if you look hard and if you do your research and go way back, the sales tax that we are collecting now for both months for Jeepin' and Cruisin', basically pays for itself for the money we're giving them. So, that's just my thought of it.
Okay. So, you're, not to put words in your mouth, you're on the side of eighty-five?
I won't, yeah, I would vote with eighty.
Okay, I, I'll, with track, retract my, uh, secondary motion, and we'll go with Mr. Bernie's, I believe.
Yes.
That's fine. You have a, you have a motion and a second. I, I withdrew my motion. I withdrew my motion, and we'll go with the original.
All right, we're back to the original motion and second. Uh, is there any more discussion? Here none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, next, we have, uh, pavement markings, Jeff Davis Avenue, and I ask this just to be able to give y'all some information here. If you had, have want to consider the, the pavement markings on the side streets off of Jeff Davis, this is just a FYI. It's a tremendous amount of cost, and, uh, I just wanted y'all to have this information here for your, for your digest. If you want to, uh, take this and look at it and bring it back at the next meeting, uh, you know.
I mean, I, I'd like to make a motion to approve just Jeff Davis at this point.
Right.
The other side roads, it's-
We've got that approved already, didn't we?
Last meeting.
Okay.
But here it is. I'd like to approve only Jeff Davis at this time.
Yeah, that was forty-one thousand.
I'll second that, if that's your motion.
All right, second.
We got, we got motion, a second, twice, and, uh, uh, so, do we have any more discussion to move forward with Jeff Davis, uh, markings, so?
On another note, they finished up our lighting today, it looks like.
Yeah, yeah, I think they, I think they did finish it, so if you, yeah, well, you- Yeah, yeah, I think they, I think they did finish it, so if you, you'll see it tonight if we stick around a little bit longer, so. All right, any more discussion? Here or none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next, under new business special bin app and fee waiver request for Long Beach High School Band Booster, Festival of Bands, motion second, discussion? Here or none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next, we have memorandum of agreement, M.DOT. This is the Klondike and Cleveland intersection where we moved money from, uh, Pineville and Railroad, Pineville-Klondike Railroad, over to there. Uh, and, you know, motion, we have a second.
Second discussion.
Discussion.
And this just goes out maybe to David. It looks like that they have moved the power pole, but it looks like, I guess, the phone has not moved anything for the intersection is, I mean, cause they're showing they go be, won't open around July. I don't want it to be, we have a problem. Is there any way we, we could call somebody, or?
Well, just kinda throwing that out there, we, we had some problems when we, right there at Walgreens, that was the whole, major holdup was AT&amp;T the last time, too.
David, they need to follow up on that, at that intersection there at Cleveland and Klondike, and make sure that we've got all that out of the way and taken care of, so we can move forward this as soon as possible.
Sure, okay.
Thank you.
All right, so I got a motion and a second, any more discussion?
Please.
We're gonna add in that David's gonna work with the utilities there of the telephone systems. Any more discussion? Here or none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next, we've got, Patrick, you won't excuse yourself for this. This is a memorandum of understanding between the Long Beach School District and the City of Long Beach for some drainage work at the middle school. And let the record show that Patrick has left the room. Uh, they have requested that we assist them, and I advised them that we couldn't do anything until we had a memorandum of understanding, and, uh, we've worked through that, got that before us. It's gonna be mainly doing some drainage behind the middle school to the east of the middle school, between there and, what is it, Gardendale.
But this, Mr. Mayor, is that, that's not the only thing limited, limiting this to, am I correct?
No.
Because like, in the past, we've asked, uh, utility partners to also clean that ditch right there by the entrance of the high school.
High school, but this is strictly to the middle school.
Okay, do, would we need a separate one for that, or can we do a blanket?
I guess we could do a blanket, but I don't know if we could change it right now, since it's got this on the agenda.
I'm good either way, I was just wondering, instead of having to do it, you know, each and every time.
I think, counsel, can you give me some direction on that? Can we go ahead and change this to a blanket to all the schools, to the school system, or?
Or should we approve this one tonight and come back with a different one?
Uh, my, my, you could do that, but the school board approved this last week.
Right.
So, if you change it, you're gonna go back to the school board. My suggestion would be what Donald says, approve this, and if you wanna do another one, they can do another one, send it back.
Ask the school board to send us another memorandum.
The school board will send you another one, just a general, a general interlocal, it says you can do all, yeah.
Okay.
That'd be the quickest.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you for bringing that up, Donald, we can get that straightened out next time. So, any more discussion on this? Here or none?
We didn't get a motion.
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion.
I'm sorry, we got a motion and a second now, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
All right, now that we've already discussed it, y'all got anything else to discuss on it? Here or none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Patrick? All right. Next, we have permission to subcontract, this is our railroad crossing improvement. There's four separate contractors in there, a motion, second discussion, approval.
Move.
All right, all, all of these subcontractors will be working under Moran-Hauling and to do the work, specialized work on the, on the crossings, be it curbing, be it, uh, signalization, whatever it might be there. Uh, y'all've got it all before you, is there any discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor, do you remember the kickoff date on that, on this project? I know we announced it last night.
They haven't, they haven't.
Third, I think, is when they begin construction.
Yeah, but I think they haven't actually picked that date yet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, their notice to proceed is March third, yes.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I think they're ready to roll, too, as soon as we give them notice to proceed.
Yes, sir, thank you.
We do all four at the same time?
Yeah, we're gonna, it's, it's all under one there, so we'll take all four as once. So, we got a motion and a second on it, so, any more discussion? Here or none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next, we have tree ordinance, Alderman-Frazier. Uh, we brought, he brought this up last week, uh, last meeting, so I'll get a motion second for further discussion.
Second.
All right, discussion is that we had brought up about increasing the tree fees, uh, tree permit fees to be able to look at maybe hiring an arborist to do our inspections for us. And, uh, Donald, I don't know if you've got some more you wanna add to that, or?
So, I, I guess, um, what I wanted to really do is, and, and get some input from you guys on top of it. Right now, they come to us with, uh, once they're approved to remove a protected tree, it's a forty-five dollar, uh, application fee. Uh, and, so what I'd like to do is, we, um, we nominated some individuals, uh, last meeting to be on our tree board, but what I'd like to do is, something like, add a hundred dollars or whatever we can find that the going rate is for a certified arborist to look at the tree. Um, but also give Mike the leeway to look at the tree first. If he sees that it's obviously dead, he can make that call, you know, right there. I mean, we've talked about this, giving Mike leeway, but, but I think it needs to actually be in writing so that Mike has something to stand on going, hey, I made the call, this tree was visibly dead from, from day one, and, and speed up the process for that individual, uh, as far as liability purposes as well. Um, but, but I guess I'm looking at, my suggestion, just off the top of the head, would be a hundred, adding a hundred dollars to the application so that the city can offset a cost to have a certified arborist, um, go out and review the tree. Cause, I mean, whether it's a, an water oak, or a, a, another tree that, you know, it looks just like a live oak, or, you know, or a magnolia, or anything like. That's, that's what you were using as the example, I forgot that, so. So, that was, that was my main purpose there.
All right, well, uh.
I have a question.
Sure.
Uh, a hundred dollars to the application, or a extra hundred?
An extra hundred, so it'd be, your application fee would be a hundred and forty-five dollars.
Even if they didn't have to go out there?
Uh, no, if Mike makes the call, it's just the regular.
We can add a hundred if we have to.
If we have to, if we have to have an arborist go out there.
You think we need to maybe reach out to an arborist, cause they might be more than a hundred dollars?
Sure, I mean, but, but this is not, I don't think this is, I, my intention was not to take action tonight. It was to start the discussion so that.
Reach out to Joe?
Yeah, yeah, I'll reach out to, I mean, between, between Mike and I, we could reach out to.
But I think, here's the other thing, is I think we also need to have a couple different guys, because.
Have more rotation.
So, cause, for, for, you know, clarity, if, if Joe is, uh, the one cutting the tree, well, of course it's gotta come down, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I, I agree with you, you know, we've talked about it last meeting, about having a rotation of several of them. Fortunately or unfortunately, most of the arborists are our tree people who do, do tree service and, uh, either cleaning up trees or taking out trees that, that we have. Uh, but I, I agree with Mike wholeheartedly there. We probably need to reach out to them, Mike, and see what they would charge for an inspection of a tree. And if they would be willing to go on to a, a rotating basis, similar to what we do or like what we do with our wrecker service, and, uh, and see if they would be willing to participate in that. And then we'll bring it back to the board once we get all that information gathered. Is that all right with everybody?
Yes, sir. And I'll do some more research.
Just for discussion, no action taken.
Discussion, all right. All right, any more questions, thoughts on that, before we move on? All right, here and now, next, we've got dumpster enclosures, Alderman-Brown.
I guess this is FYI, and we can discuss this, but, so, behind some of our businesses here on, uh, the corner of Railroad, it, it looks like a disaster for two or three months. Mike and them would finally send a letter. We have an ordinance that was passed in, I don't know exactly the year, which made it, we required a dumpster to have been enclosed. But evidently, cause the ordinance was done before, like Goodwill was.
Yeah.
So, why have we not got them to put a enclosure? Cause we're having people, what we're having is Goodwill and, and, uh, the, what is it, Dollar Tree or whatever? That was a disaster the other day, I even called Mike, he went out there, it really was.
People are going and like digging through them.
That's what I'm talking about, yeah.
And they're just throwing stuff everywhere, it looks awful.
Well, you got the one right here at Railroad and Klondike, south, on the south side of Railroad, uh, where it's just sitting out there, and we're doing everything we can to beautify that by add sign and breaking it up and, you know, making it more reasonable.
Counsel, can we amend an ordinance to require all businesses in Long Beach to go have a dumpster to be enclosed?
Yeah, it, it, I mean, I don't, I don't remember what that ordinance says exactly, but yeah, you can do that if you want to. You, the only thing you're gonna have to do is, is accommodate the schedule and the ability for the pickups. You know, you don't want them locked inside a gate when it's time to come pick it up. But I, I mean, that's not, that doesn't, that don't seem difficult to me.
I would think the ones that are visible from the road, too, are the ones, you know.
Well, you know, you gotta.
Still, for one, you have to do it for all.
Well, let me.
You've got a restaurant that's not visible from the main roads around here, and it's terrible. But you got neighbors that look at it every day.
Right.
So.
Well, according to the Health Department, and, and we can look at that, I, I believe, uh, one of our attorneys in the past said, we, we don't plagiarize, we, we borrow, I think was the quote.
Precedent.
Precedent, excuse me. Uh, but the Health Department requires an enclosure for a restaurant to have a, uh, you know, it's a, it's a health code. So, that's something we can look at, using their wording, because also restaurants now to have it, you have to have hot water out there as well to, uh, clean the area.
Back to Mike, would you check into that and bring it back to us about the Health Department? And enclosures, maybe check and see the other city ordinances?
I can, I can, and if I get it before the next meeting, I'll email it to y'all.
I mean.
But I know what you're asking about this building over here. I mean, I don't know when the ordinance was put in, but that building, you're dealing with not one, you're dealing with multiple throughout there, so the.
But somebody's gotta be paying for that dumpster.
No doubt, but I'm just saying, you're, you're saying one store.
Right.
But they built that whole shopping center, just say nineteen ninety. Well, I don't know what the ordinance said back then about putting dumpsters in the thing, so now, like you said, we need to go back and amend.
So, I just.
I'm just.
Understand.
Kinda adding to your statement.
I just would like for us to think about it and maybe put it back on the agenda at a later time when you have finished yours.
And if I find out anything, I'll email all y'all before the meeting.
Okay.
And then we'll have it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any more thoughts? Questions, discussion? Okay, moving on, Department Business, Mayor's Office. Uh, Donald and I were able to go to Washington DC last week. We had a much better reception from FEMA than what we've been having. Uh, we were able to, to talk with them, and we've got the paperwork signed, moved up through MEMA to get to FEMA, uh, to be able to move forward, we start doing some work down there. Request is being put in for them to have us a public assistance officer made available strictly to us. Uh, that's, uh, something that they were open to doing. And, uh, there's, uh, you know, other funding sources there that we couldn't discuss until we had the paperwork signed, but we will be, uh, doing a conference call to see what further, now that we've got that signed and moved forward, what other sources are available to us. We've been talking about hazard mitigation funding, I think that's another source, and there may be some HUDs or some other fundings out there. So, we're gonna continue to move forward with that. Uh, work is continuing at the harbor as we speak. Uh, the, the east wall has made the turn to go up onto the north end to terminate into the curbing. Uh, it's getting closer and closer, uh, to being finished. Uh, we're looking at, uh, at the next meeting, I think it is, of, of, we'll open bids next week for the, uh, inside wall, and hopefully at the next meeting, we'll be able to award bids for the interior retaining wall. And that's exciting to be moving forward with that. To understand that we've got to have that wall in before we can start doing any construction on piers. Once that is, is, has begun, we're gonna go ahead and move forward with, uh, looking and working with FEMA to remove Pier One and Pier Five, so we can start construction on them in the harbor. Uh, Pier Five, we'll be able to move forward with it quicker than we can with Pier One, because it has to have that retaining wall on the inside. But that is, that's moving forward, uh, so we're, you know, in HUD, we've been waiting for HUD to give us back approval for the gateway. Uh, well, apparently, we've been swapping project managers for that out of HUD, and apparently some of those people were stay-at-home people that no longer work for HUD. So, Senator Hyde-Smith has been in discussion with HUD to assign us someone to get us answers quickly. And, uh, so we hope to get something back from them within a week or so, uh, if not sooner. Uh, so, the March for the Mayors, uh, that is our, where we collect the green beans. This is our fifth year, uh, to do this program. Courtney and I, on, uh, January thirtieth, we were over in Pasca-Gulley again, sponsored by Ingles, to get our kickoff, uh, uh, materials that we need, and, uh, it's, it's always a good thing. This is the fifth year we've been involved with March for the Mayors. We've made a concerted effort through our grocery stores, through our publications, through our, uh, social media, uh, worked in conjunction with the schools, continue to work with the schools, uh, to make this an effort, uh, to do things for the students, the, the class that brings in the most. Uh, and, uh, we're a little behind now on collections, and I, you know, I beg our citizens, uh, we get this food back to our, uh, to our food pantry, and, uh, it, it, uh, it's not just green beans, it's, it's a combination of everything that's collected, from, from spaghetti noodles to peanut butter, to jelly, to, to any number of, you know, corn, creamed corn, whole kernel, kernel of corn in cans. It all goes back to all the food pantries, and we are well-stocked once we get through with this. So, again, I asked y'all to continue to work with this March of the Mayors, this is a good thing. Uh, you're helping folks, you're doing the right thing, and I asked you again just to open up and, uh, let's bring forth and make this as successful as we've always been. Uh, our city has been the, the one that has given the most, uh, for this. And, uh, we ask y'all to please continue, just a little update on that, uh. Deadline is the.
Monday. Monday.
This coming Monday? Okay, yeah, we do have a deadline, folks, so please, uh, if you can, you know, let's talk this up. Let's get the, let's get it out, you could drop it off here at City Hall, any of the, of the three fire stations or at the police department, so it's the convenient spots to do it, so please participate in that. Uh, also, I wanted to bring up, and this is just a discussion point, and hopefully have it, uh, at next, uh, next meeting for us to look, start looking at our twenty-twenty-four paving plan. Of course, everybody says it's twenty-twenty-five, why haven't you done twenty-four? When twenty-three, we got caught up where we had a contract with a paver that sold out, the new paver that they sold out to decided they didn't wanna do it. We had to go through the process again to get a new paving company, and we finally caught up with that. The paving that's going on on Pineville Road right now is our new company, and, uh, we wanna be able to move forward. But we wanna look at, uh, David, to, uh, look at proposed streets. Uh, Alderman, if you've got anything, email them to David. Uh, look at our, uh, paving plan that we've been a part of, uh, worked at through the county, and, uh, get your input to David, and David will put everything together and bring it, maybe email it back to us where we could look at it before the next meeting and hopefully move forward and continue, uh, keeping the paving company here. So, that's all I have under mind, the ple, uh, person.
Mitchell Road.
Pardon me?
I, I was saying we should look at Mitchell Road there.
Eliminate, yeah. Alright, moving on, uh, personnel. We've got, uh, Police Department, one new hire, Fire Department, we got one resignation and one promotion. Building Department, we got an education pay. The library, we got a step increase of two. And Municipal Court, we got a resignation of one. Uh, motion second, take all these together, uh, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have City Clerk Revenue Expense Report, January twenty twenty-five, motion second, discussion and approval. And motion second, uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, Fire Department Chief Scaly, you have anything?
Uh, finally, glad to announce finally got the ladder truck fixed.
Okay.
Uh, took them two weeks at Rocket C, uh, working on things and finally got it narrowed down and figured it out today.
Today.
So, um.
Back in service?
Back in service.
Good, good deal.
What about our new one? Any update on that? Update on our new one?
Uh, it'll be, uh, delivered in February next year.
Yeah, it's a.
Yep.
A long way.
Thank COVID for that.
Long way out. They couldn't, I've called, uh, and asked them to see if they could move us up, if they could, if they could put us in their queue from our distributor. Uh, cause they have trucks, they're already committed.
Okay.
And. That's, that's for a pumper. It's a twenty-six month wait right now. If, if you ordered a, a aerial device right now, it's minimum thirty-six months wait. And that's all across.
It's any brand.
It doesn't matter what brand you're looking at or what, you can't get mad and tell them, okay, we're gonna go get this kind of truck. Okay.
Uh, yeah, good luck. I, I, I understand what, and I, it's not.
At you, I.
I truly thought we were coming up on, we'll, we'll be getting it.
Well, they came to me two, three months ago and, uh, a representative from Ocala and was gonna break the news for June of next year. And I, I didn't sit, I sat there at my desk and didn't say a word and he started working in his book and got on the phone and said, how about February? And I said, I don't like that either, but, um.
That's what we could do.
There's nothing I could do with it.
I understand. Uh, I mean, news is news. It's, we don't have to be happy with it, but at least, you know.
Least we know. So, you got anything else, Chief?
Thanks, Griff.
Only other, uh, bit of business that I, did, did you have a chance to read that, uh, state, uh, Senate bill that I?
Yes, yes. There's a, there's a Senate bill that's been passed that, uh, they wanna take, uh, the countywide radio system that we have. That, uh, that's above minimum standard, although it is old and going out and due to be replaced. Should've been replaced, what, three years ago, four years ago? And, uh, the, the nine woman commission has, oh, basically advertised and got the low bidder and ready to move forward with. But the Senate, the State Senate decided that they would take and, and just wanna take over all the radio systems. Put us on a, on a statewide system that would, uh, put it where if we have a problem with any of our radio systems, we have to call through MEMA, I think it is. And ask them to, to help us and get it fixed.
It's not only, not only the radio, Mayor, they're, uh, the, the governor approved, the state taking over or doing, uh, the new generation nine-one-one system. The, the upgrade, uh, which is a great thing, uh, across the state. But this, uh, this bill that has been pushed through the Senate, still gotta go through the House, uh.
But.
Twenty-eight, thirty-five. What it does is it, it makes it where the state is gonna form a commission. Um, they will be in charge of all of the funding that, like, we get off of.
Telephone.
Nine-one-one charges, uh, that'll all go into a state, uh, coffer. And then you will write a letter asking for monies to. Buy new equipment for your peace apps and, uh, your dispatch centers and, and what have you. It'll all be state run at that point. Uh, they did make it, did make it, you know, um, at this time, not to get into a big thing. But there are a couple of other cities on this Gulf Coast that are not all about the radio system because they were afraid they were gonna have to kick in some money, some funding. So they jumped back on the state system. Well, now this bill has it where an entity can jump on board with another emergency communications district. For instance, if we felt like we would get better service grouped with Hancock County, the city of Long Beach could pull out and be in with Hancock County. And, and it's just, uh, the deeper we look into it, we don't find it good for the Gulf Coast.
I think he's delicately, delicately saying that this is a money grab and I'm not putting words in his mouth, I am.
This is the issue with it is that's, I agree with that, but it does, you build a new building. E.T.'s a perfect example. You're gonna spend seventy-five thousand dollars to put in a BDA system for the radios. This, the state will pay for it.
As they, as they should right now, but they don't. They won't.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So the kicker would be, let's say they came and changed it to where every school district, no matter how old your building, or every building that's metal that you can't get a radio service in. I mean, if they said that tomorrow, uh, which could be down the pipeline, you're looking at school districts, all this, millions of dollars. And with this bill, it would be paid for by the state.
Maybe.
If they wanted to fund you.
If they wanna fund it, maybe.
So is that Mizwin?
Excuse me?
But Mizwin?
Mizwin, yeah.
This is, this is a whole new, this is a separate bill from Mizwin. Uh, this is big government, basically is what it is.
This is, this is a mandate coming, this is a mandate coming out of, out of Jackson. Whereas right now, we've got a perfect system.
The county has control of our system.
We have control of funding and if we go to this, every penny that we collect from commercial phone or residential phone will go to Jackson.
Seventy-three percent or something like that will go to Jackson.
Right.
You'll get a little.
They're gonna give a little bit that we.
Little bit.
They're gonna, they're gonna give us next to nothing about what we're getting right now.
It's a House bill or Senate bill?
Senate.
It's already passed the Senate. It's, it's trying to get through the House.
They're not gonna be able to get opposition out of the House representatives either.
Senator Delano put the bill out.
I can't, it told me back.
But anyway, it is, it's not, as of right now, it can put Harrison County in a big lawsuit. Uh, if it passes tomorrow, it can put Harrison County in a big lawsuit because they were in negotiations with this other contractor for the radio system. So I, I don't know, I don't know what we're gonna do.
Let me ask you something, Griff. Is this gonna be a seven hundred or eight hundred trunk?
Uh, they're saying eight hundred. They're working seven hundred right now.
Right, that's why I was asking, because a, a seven hundred trunk has a narrower bandwidth, whereas we in Harrison County, we own a big wide band of eight hundred. Where the expansion could go on for hundreds of years.
Actually, um, Patrick made a good point on that. Um, and this, this is, uh, trying to be very nice about some of them.
No, you don't have to be.
Well, it, it's been pushed in through the, the new generation nine-one-one system. And what it's gonna do is end up taking the radio system and all of the way it's laid out. But it doesn't mention that in this bill.
Right.
That's what it's gonna do. Um, I, I don't know. Some feelings got hurt and, uh, when we didn't go with Mizwin because, uh, just like the lady that runs Mizwin, every time she presents Mizwin to us. Her, uh, she's proud as she can be and I know she is because she works hard on that system. But every time she presents it to us, she says, the state has a minimum standard that we uphold. Well, she's, she laid it out right there. Uh, and it's no different than when we, when the Police Department, the Fire Department send people to get trained, we send them up there for minimum standards. They're not ready to turn loose. When they get back from minimum standard training, they still had need more education, more experience. And Harrison County and, and the entities inside of it at this point are saying, we do not want a minimum standard communication system.
Right, because we have higher than minimum standards as we speak.
Right.
Going back to what Patrick said about the, the repeaters in the, in the buildings, we did that many years ago to make that requirement. Of course, it does cost more.
It does cost.
It also protects those firefighters who may be going into, I mean, a police officer going to school for a non-shooter, that their system will work in that building, their handsets will work.
Right.
They'll be able to talk to folks in there. Same thing with you and the Fire Department. So minimum standards is, is great.
Actually, Mayor, and you are absolutely right, minimum standard for a radio system in the state of Mississippi is for a mobile radio. That means in your vehicle.
Mm-hmm.
So if I need to contact somebody inside of a structure fire, they're gonna have to come out and get on the vehicle radio and talk to me.
Right.
And that doesn't work.
Whereas now, you could hear your police officers and your firefighters inside the structure talking back to you on a handheld unit.
That's correct.
Okay. Alright, you got anything else?
That's it.
Thank you. Alright, uh, moving forward, Police Department, we've got an agreement with, uh, Genetek Cloud Services License Plate Reader. And I want to get a motion second for, for a discussion and approval. We got a motion second discussion. Now, this is not a tag reader that reads to see if you got insurance or tickets.
Thank you. I was gonna ask that question.
Or anything like that. Uh, Chief, you wanna explain that?
Yes, sir. This, this MOU is only going to allow the camera systems we have now in the city to run NCIC. That means if a stolen car goes past that camera, it's gonna notify us. That's all this MOU does.
Right.
These aren't the Ocean Springs.
No, 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 no citations.
The same company. That's why I looked at, I was like.
Thank, no, this one's out of Canada. That one's out of Birmingham, I think.
This, yeah, this only allows.
Thank you, Patrick, for saying that. I wanted to make sure that we understood that we're, that this is something that we've had.
These allow our current cameras to run NCIC.
Right.
So if a stolen car goes by.
Stolen car, drug car that's being tracked, uh.
It'll notify us.
It will notify.
That's the only thing this MOU does.
Alright, any more discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, let's go to Engineer. And David, we've got several things here that tie up together. Uh, the first one is temporary and permanent easement issues in Parkwood and Browerwood area, uh, drainage project. I hope y'all have read this. We've been on this, what, six months ago when we looked at this? And we've had a solution, uh, to reroute, uh, new culvert, drainage culvert, uh, into the current drainage easement. When this was developed many years before Long Beach annexed, this drainage pipe was put real close to where they decided to build a house. And our efforts at that time, uh, explaining it to the owner was that we would reroute up close to the road, get it back into our easement, our drainage easement. And then we, we would fill that pipe that's close to her house without having to dig and possible damages to the structure. Uh, this is an inherited situation. Uh, since then, she has contacted her attorney and he has advised her to sell us an easement to get in there. And, uh, do, dig it out and fill it in. Uh, I, I will, am I correct in that statement?
I, I think her, her attorney advised her to just sell the easements that we need to do what you just described at fair market value. And, and that may be the appropriate way to go forward. I, you know, that's.
Now, when you say easement, our given easement that we could look at right now putting this pipe into?
No, sir. We would have, we would need a small, to avoid getting into a bunch of third party utilities, which is fiber optics and ceasefire. We were gonna avoid those and we would have a small impact on her property. So we would need a new easement to cover that small impact, which is really very up close front to her road. It's, uh.
It's a small triangle piece there up close to the road.
It's, it's less than twenty-five feet of impact. So even in, in our ordinance, I don't think she could build a shed or anything in that twenty-five foot space anyways. And then also a temporary easement to do the abandonment of the existing pipe that you're talking about. I think her attorney just said, hey, sell those to the city.
So if, now, I'll ask you this tomorrow. Uh, I guess, yeah, well, you know, I mean, what if we, what, let me go ahead and ask this question. What if the board decides to go ahead and purchase that, that small triangle piece there, that small piece that we need from her? And we do the connection and we don't touch our pipe? Are we, are we responsible for that, Mr. Counselor, or, or, you know?
I'm trying to understand this. I'm not fully up to speed on this. Um, you're gonna abandon the, the failing culvert in place?
One thing my letter said and I inadvertently amended it as a, as an exhibit, and I can hand that, that might help illustrate the issue. I'm sorry. The, the existing culvert has shown a kind of crosshatch on it and the new culvert, um, runs its angle from there, um, kind of. Not, you know, we're a little bit more angled away from the existing culvert that's got a crosshatch on it and it gets inside of that existing easement and then runs kind of north and south from there.
Alright, when you say exist, existing easement, we have that, we have that ability to run that pipe right now without purchasing anything.
That is a flat easement that's on the dock.
Right. What we're asking for easement is, is that small section of about, uh, looks like thirty, about twenty-five foot across the.
That's right.
Across the corner of that yard that would give us the possibility of, of missing any, uh, uh, fiber optics or anything like that.
That's right. And, and less, way less disruption to the public during that construction. Yes, sir.
Right. So I guess, going back to my original question, we purchased that easement, we do that pipe and then we run the rest of the pipe in our existing easement. Uh, are we required, Counsel, to, to do anything with that vacated pipe?
And that's what you're talking about, abandon in place, the vacated?
We had proposed to, to, to fill that section that's very close to her house. I mean, there's already leaking.
That caves.
You can see cave-ins at, at like four, five, six foot intervals. So we were proposing to, to cap that off and fill it with concrete, you know, like a flowable fill. So it would be no longer a hole in the ground. It would be filled with concrete and not, you know, and threatening her house in any way.
She's alright with that?
Well, she was until she met with her attorney and, and then they advised to sell.
So.
Instead of, instead of to exit.
Easement, you put new pipe in the new easement.
That's right.
But you'd still leave this there?
Well, we think it would be good for the city and her to abandon it via a flow fill so that it's no longer just a, a hole to accept infiltration from soil materials right next to her house. Cause these are, the reason we're doing this project is the pipes are in bad shape and are failing.
Very much. I mean, she, she, she needs this is, is.
She does.
I, I mean, we've, we've been through this in another context. The best way to abandon this pipe is to fill it with flow of concrete, right? Cause that, that makes it.
Yeah.
We certainly don't want to dig, right? I mean, when I say very close, I think it, it might even be under her house.
Right.
We don't wanna dig the pipe out.
I, I think you got, I think you minimize your liability by doing that. The risk now is that it fails in her house?
I, I guess, Jim, the question I'm asking, are we required to concrete flow fill that pipe if we abandon it?
How'd she get on, wait a minute, that, let me give you a straight answer if I can. Probably so. And, and I don't know how she got on our easement. So shame on her if she got on top of our pipe and you wanna say, hey, if the pipe collapses, she shouldn't have built on top of it. And that's a pretty good argument if we didn't know about it. But, but now that we know that our pipe might be under her house and our pipe might fail, it doesn't really matter how she got on top of it. We need to take steps to, to make sure she doesn't.
That's what I wanna make sure.
That's what I, that's what I believe.
So this will give us leeway then, David, to be able to have a discussion with her. And we may have to go through Counsel to have a discussion with her attorney, since she has an attorney, to say, this is what we're willing to do.
Do you know who our attorney was?
I do not, no, sir.
We probably need to get with Ms. Thomas and see if we can figure this out.
We can, we can try to get in touch with her. Once she said, get in touch with attorney, we kinda just set back until we could get an opportunity.
And even once you do this, I mean, to, 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 to finish this, still gonna have to come back to these guys and get the easement approved and the amount of money. If it's fifty bucks or five hundred bucks, get whatever it is approved. So you'll see it again. This is just kinda. If it's fifty bucks or five hundred bucks, get whatever it is approved. So you'll see it again. This is just kinda telling you to go that direction, right?
Can I, can I ask, on the existing pipe, I mean, if we were willing, if the city was willing to disrupt the existing utilities and, and, and construct everything within our existing platted easement or within our existing right-of-way, would we have the right to abandon that pipe with flow fill as a prescriptive easement? A- as part of maintenance of our existing utility that's not in an easement, but it's a prescriptive easement? If, if for some reason all this falls apart?
Yes. If, this, I, I'm not sure I'm, I'm understanding you. So I, I hate shooting from the hip. If this, if this, if this pipe is failing, we've got the right to go in there. We have almost an obligation to go in there and stop it from failing. And whether we got an easement or not, um, you know, we gotta mitigate that dangerous circumstance and I don't know I don't know that we caused it. And to tell you the truth, I'd never admit we did if we did, but I mean, that's not the point. Point is, i- it's there now. However it got, it got caused, and I think we got the right to go in there and fix it.
Even though we inherited this through annexation?
Yeah, yeah. Is that what happened? It was there when we annexed it?
Yes.
Right, yeah. And I just wanna make sure that we all understand that.
I doubt we have any liability for it being there. But the question becomes now, now that we know it's there and it's a dangerous condition, do we have some kind of obligation to go in there and fix it? Um, if we got, I, I'd, I'd much rather try to defend going in there to fix it than ignoring it and, and allowing something to happen when we knew we could have fixed it. I mean, I, 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 that's just too much risk to take, I think.
All right. David, I, I guess that, that we need to get the information to counsel.
Let me get her lawyer name and talk to him and, you know.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then be in discussion with our counsel so he could be in discussion with her counsel. Okay, so there'll be no action taken on that besides what's direction has been given. Uh, next, we have easement instructions, Parkwood and Browerwood area drainage project. Uh, this is another situation where we've got, uh, an existing covert in our easement uh, that, uh, has been, has storage buildings on top of it.
That's right, in some cases.
And, and in trees, uh, some of them, you know, are, are bigger trees above eight inches diameter and, and most of them are smaller uh, that would be within the confines of the contract to be moved. But those that are eight inches are bigger or require some additional funding to have those moved. If I'm reading this correctly.
It is.
Uh, but we also gonna have to, to let those, and I think through, I think the best way to do this is through a letter from our city attorney to homeowners that they got the option of moving their sheds, if they're movable, out of our, uh, you know, easement. Or, or we can go through and have the contractor remove them as construction goes forward. So I guess, uh, you know, I'd, I'd need some.
This, I mean, we, we did that same thing in Joyce and Rita Basin. We had to have them move everything.
Right.
Made them mad, but now everything flows.
Well, this, this project, Mike, you can verify this with me, David, a year, a year and a half, we've been going out there maybe even two years because it's caving.
Right.
Concrete pipe's giving out, and they go out there, we fill it or try to
Patch it.
patch it, and we're done. So this project's been going, what, David, at least a year, year and a half we've been trying, or?
Yeah, it, it may be even decades that, that Public Works has been dealing with it. We've had funding for a little, for about a year.
So it's talked about this eight years ago when I came into office.
This, uh, it's getting to the point, yeah, we, we got to make a move on this.
What they're talking about now.
I like your idea about giving the homeowners an op- just as a courtesy, giving them a heads up it's coming and giving them an opportunity to move it themselves if they want. Some of them will, some of them won't, but I think all of them would appreciate the courtesy of, of the heads up, yeah.
You go take care of getting that letter to the attorney or have him write it?
Let me get a motion second.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, got a motion and second to, to direct, uh, uh, engineering to get again with, with counsel and, uh, maybe make a courtesy call uh, to these homeowners where we know we've got these, these infractions in, in the drainage easement and then follow up, uh, with a letter to them. So that's the motion and second.
That's a motion.
Yes, sir.
All right. Uh, any more discussion on this? Hearing none. All of us in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next, we have, uh, authorized advertisement, uh, Parkwood and Browerwood and Magnolia and Deere Man. Uh, this is ARPA McQuie Projects, uh, we talked about in early December. Uh.
Mayor, do we wanna, David, do we wanna keep Parkwood and them in there until we see where we're going with this, or?
You know, we, we really didn't provide an official schedule. We really, if y'all would like, we could, we can hold off on approving this and we won't advertise, or y'all could give us authority to advertise when it seems right to us, just to make sure we don't miss any deadlines.
What we have right now is when we advertise it before, the bids were high because everybody was, all the contracts were busy and working. Now that it's slowed down, we feel like if we go ahead and advertise now, we can get a bid that we can award.
Okay, that's, that's.
So that's your motion?
Well, like, yeah, but.
Back to discussion?
We're talking about it was like a hundred percent over budget.
Right, right.
It was.
So are we just wasting time?
We don't know until the bids come back?
Well, right now, we've been receiving bids that's been, uh, lower than what we've been estimating. Uh, so, you know, I, we feel like now, based on where work is, you gotta remember when this was happening, everybody, everybody had ARPA and McQuie Projects lined up along with other projects, and you couldn't get a, you had to struggle to even get contractors to bid, bid on things.
I would also offer that the funding agencies have told us that, you know, you, you could drop one of, you know, if, let's say they come in seventy-five percent over or fifty percent over they have offered, you could drop one of those projects and use the funds for Project C to fund Project A and B. That is, that would be compliant according to the funding agency.
Right.
So that's a decision that y'all could make.
I mean, I think that's something that's gonna, like, one hundred percent, like, we're doing this, but we might as well just hit the brakes and do that because we, if it's sixty or a hundred percent over, I don't think anybody, I don't think we're going into rainy day fund to do this, so.
No, 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 we're just going out for bids.
Pump the brakes and, like, something's gonna have to go. We know.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and, you know, we, that's what we sought out from, from, from the administrators to get that thought process in there. Can we, you know, we bid A, B, and C and, and, you know, all three of them are high, but can we relocate C to, to A and?
Before we start, may, you know, not, before we put a lot of effort into talking to people about moving sheds, cutting down trees and stuff like that, do we need to have, like, a?
He's specifically talking about the last one here.
Yeah, this, this had the.
I mean, we're gonna have, we, we're not doing all these. There's just no way. I mean, we can bid it for fun, but we know that something's gotta go. Probably half of this project's gotta go for us to be under budget.
And we won't know until we bid them.
Right.
You know, until we bid them, we won't know what price we'll get, whether we need to start slashing anything. Once we get a ba- uh, get bids, we'll know and then, you know, we've, through the administrators, we found out that, yeah, we can cut. You know, we may cut Park Row out. Uh, we may have to cut Park Row, Magnolia, Deere Man out to be able to do the, the main one. So. Uh, yeah, can I entertain a motion and second?
We did, we did.
Did I get a motion and second?
I didn't hear. I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
All right, now I have, now I know I have a motion and second. Any further discussion? And this is to move forward with the, the new bids for these three projects. All right.
Oh, three at one time?
Yeah.
They're about that. We can get all the numbers aside.
This way we get something to look at.
That's why, I just wanted to make sure I was on the same page.
Right now, we just know we got, the, the lowest bid was a hundred percent over.
Yes, sir.
Project call. So, all right, any more discussion? Hearing none. All of us in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the 2023 paving plan. Uh, motion and second discussion?
I'm, I'm making a motion to approve the, um, the overlays, but not striping. Recommended overlays.
And remove the.
Wait a minute. So this, I know, but you got a striping from Five Points to Railroad, which we definitely go need to do, the new one.
We already approved that.
It, well, it's up here. We did approve that already, so we could, we could take that out.
Yeah, we've awarded that.
We have approved that, correct?
Yes.
You've requested it. I actually have the award letter was the thing I handed, the recommendation to award was the thing I handed out at the beginning.
Yeah, we approved it.
Yeah, and we had to.
I don't think it's been, that one has not been approved yet. I don't believe.
All we approved was Jeff Davis.
But it, it could be considered tonight if y'all would take that.
Okay, so we will do.
So basically, everything but item fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen?
Fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, not approved.
So, yeah, this is, we're, we're getting confused here. Let's see. Yeah, LaRosa, okay.
I don't, I don't think the side roads need to be striped.
A second.
Well, we got a motion and second on this. We're still in discussion.
Yeah.
Uh, is there any more discussion? What, what the motion and second is, is to go ahead and do with the recommended overlays, which will be, uh, Pineville to Cl- from, uh, Clower to Royal, uh, where we've got a bad section in there, Gates, Allen to Old Pass, LaRosa, Five Points to Klondike, Lover's Lane from Beetline to Daughtry, and Mitchell from, it's B Middle Mitchell from Pineville to Lover's Lane. Uh, and removing striping. If we need, we could look at striping later.
Later down the road.
Uh, so that, that is the motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All of us in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, uh, next, we have, uh, Public Works. Mike?
We are good, thank you.
Good, good. Y'all ready for Mardi Gras and all set up with the?
We're getting barricades out now.
I know y'all putting out barricades today, so, okay. Thank y'all. Uh, Bob, Recreation, you also ready for?
We're getting ready for Mardi Gras also, but let me give you a little update on our playgrounds. We're waiting on one, uh, replacement part for the, uh, part at Wall Memorial Park, and, uh, that'll be complete except the shade structure, bathroom, fence. Uh, we're just waiting on those items for there. And then we're gonna move on after, uh, we get done with this parade to the, uh, swing set at the Town Green, and we'll be complete. There's a few other things out there. We're still waiting on the completion of lights at the Town Green. Weaver's been working on those for about three months now. Um, I think they're waiting for Mississippi Power to complete the, um, installs of the new lights down there, and I think that's the issue that they're waiting on to finish that, so.
All right.
Other than that, we're doing good.
All right, the pavilion, pavilion over at, uh, Wall Memorial Park, we will be meeting there tomorrow with, with Mike, uh, from Public Works, uh, marking out where that's going, looking at the trees that may have to be removed. I think, Mike, you and Courtney have talked today to the contractor, and he's ready for location, so he's began work on that. Uh, we need to look at, uh, did we advertise for bid for fencing on that and receive?
Yeah, it's already approved.
Fencing's already been approved, and they contacted me last week wanting to know if they wanted us to start, or them to start, where they could do the back and, uh, a portion of the sides, or do they, we want to do it all done one time?
And I think we were holding up so we get, make sure we get the pavilion and construction in there. It may be that if they wanna start and we could talk with the contractor and see if it would interfere with him getting in and out of there. Uh, so we need to look at that tomorrow also if we have the opportunity. Okay?
There's also another day Harrison County, um, did approve the, uh, engineers in May of last year for the girls' softball field. Um, they are within the next two months. They will begin on the concession stand.
Right.
So there is gonna be movement on the girls' softball field.
Yeah, and they, they had some, some sort of mix-up with elevation on that, the girl, on the, the concession stand there that they had to work out. Uh, and they've been working on it for a while, but that's good news. Angie, thank you for updating us on that. So, uh, Bob, you got anything else?
We're good, thank you.
Okay. All right, Mike, Building Office?
He's good.
You staying busy? Permits still slow? Workforce has been depleted for the builders? I said workforce has been depleted for the builders?
It has.
Okay. All right, Municipal Court, uh, Contract, Swettman Security Service, uh, motion second, discussion approval?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All of us in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, Emma, you and Kira got anything that y'all need to? Uh, Ms. Kira, thank you for being here. You're, uh, anticipating moving in on July the first to, as, as court clerk, and, uh, congratulations and welcome you to that position. Uh, look forward to you filling that, that, uh, position and knowing that you've got great direction across, down the hall from you to, to back you up. So, thank you for being here tonight. All right, uh, Harbor, Harry, you got anything?
A bit.
Okay, good deal. Uh, Courtney, you got anything for us?
Yes, sir. Uh, the Long Beach Parade is gonna be on Saturday. The parade starts at six o'clock, starts at the high school and ends back at the high school. Uh, we just want to let everyone know that there's not gonna be allowed any parking on Jeff Davis. Our goal is to get barricades blocked from First all the way to Ninety. We're in collaboration with Paschusian and Gulfport or is it the county? Gulfport, in Gulfport. So we'll know tomorrow if we're able to make that entire stretch, but that is our goal. So no parking, and there will be barricades so that way people are safe behind them, not going in and out of the traffic. And then we also have Arbor Day on Thursday at twelve-thirty at Greenville.
And that's the Qualls House for those who don't know. Greenville, that's the Qualls House.
And that is hosted by the Garden Club. They paid for the plants.
I, I think, yeah.
Did he do any cones out on Jeff Davis, did they?
No, I don't know who did that. The city didn't do that.
Oh.
Put cones.
Anything else, Courtney?
That's it.
Okay, I need to back up to my heading there, uh, and I wanted clarification. David, the, the markings on Pineville Road, uh, the striping, uh, from, from Five Points, did, did we award that at the same time that we did the paving, or have we awarded striping yet? That was just a question I had.
What you just gave us?
Yeah, yes, sir. That has not been awarded yet or unless, I think you may have just done it in the, in the action you took just a moment ago.
Well, that's what I wanted to make sure, that that was, that was within there.
It was on that list.
Okay.
It was on the list in the actual bid tab.
Okay. I just wanna make sure we had that clear, because I didn't want us to have any hiccups. Well, when, when it cured, we could go ahead and have a contract.
That's correct. That's why I brought it to you guys tonight, to try to get it.
All right.
Little confusion, Mike. We're, we're gonna make it.
It's true. All right, no derelict properties tonight. Uh, Mr. City Attorney, you got anything for us?
No, sir.
No, thank you for filling in tonight. Uh, we knew we had a quality, uh, attorney here.
Eighteen tonight.
Okay. Got the eighteen. This feels good to have you back again, sir. All right, uh, I'm gonna entertain a motion to recess until March the fifth. Our next scheduled meeting is March the fourth, which is Fat Tuesday, so I want to recess until
Thank you.
until March the fifth. I got a motion and second to recess until March the fifth. Got a motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All of us in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right.